Councilmember Sakewitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Here.
Mayor Potem Pogencourt?
Yes, here.
Mayor Davies?
Here.
Everyone is present, thank you.
If we can all rise for the pledge to the flag, please. Keith, would you lead us tonight, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the reprimanding the forces of chance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could all stand, remain standing, invite Gerald Fair from the Carabley Chapel to give our invocation tonight?
Let's pray. Father in heaven, thank you for this day, God, and thank you for the great privilege that you've given each and every one of us, God, as managers and stewards here. So we just pray your blessing upon this time. We pray that you would bless our council members, give them wisdom and discernment. God, I just pray also for our community leaders, God, that you would continue to bless them and direct them. And our service members, our military, Father, our police, our fire, our hospital personnel, God, that you would just continue to give all of us the strength and the wisdom. The plaque in front of our council says, "In God we trust," and so may that be true in all of us. And we thank you for this time, bless this time now, and we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. First item of business is a consent agenda. All items listed with asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussions are desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda. It will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning item before the action is taken. Stack recommendations are shown in caps. Do we have anybody from the audience who would like to have anything removed from the consent item, consent agenda? Council?
Motion to approve consent as presented.
Say.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sakewitz?
Yep.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Pogencourt?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I'd like to invite our community engagement manager to the podium, please.
Thank you, Mayor Davies, Honorable Counsel. What we've got a couple of things that we'd like to do this evening. And first, we've got a special recognition. This is something that I'm going to say thankful to the weather events that we've had. We were able to move this recognition here before the council. This was scheduled to be in Bakersfield at the VFW, but due to the weather and Highway 58 getting shut down, we got the opportunity to move it here. So we're very thankful for our VFW and honoring that for us. But I'd like to invite from post 12114, this is Tehachapi post, our commander, Ed McKeith, to come forward and they'll explain exactly what this presentation is. There's also several members of the post that joined in today.
Hi, good evening. My name's Ed Keith. And do you have someone who wants to sit down or come on? It's up to you. You sit right there. Okay. How about Ray? Come on up, Ray.
We've got to come up for the photo.
That's right. Okay, so. Okay, we're post 12114. There's two posts, VFW posts. Stans are veteran of foreign wars. I don't know if sometimes you've got to spell the acronyms out. But we believe in public service. We believe in our police officers, firefighters, and obviously our dispatchers. This is standout woman. Our post puts together these, we try and put things together and push them up to the district that highlight our public servants. So Ray Budge was one district actuary for the award they put in for. I'd like to say a few things about her that were written here in the award. If we can just have a minute here. Police technician Ray Budge deserves to be recognized in the VFW National Nine-in-One Dispatcher Public Safety Servant Awards for above and beyond work, performance, and as an outstanding dispatcher and employee. She is an exceptional individual with numerous skills and talents, as well as possesses a great capacity to meet new challenges. Ray has eagerly taken on multiple new assignments such as communications training officer, records clerk, and property clerk. Throughout these different positions, Ray has stepped up and proven she's extremely hardworking and dependable. She takes advantage of the opportunities made available to her, and her intelligence and enthusiasm are a valuable asset to the department and to the community. So on behalf of VFW 1214, I'd like to present this plaque to you. Please, Ray.
Let's get the rest of the post members up. Okay, we'll take a series of photos. Okay, so we'll start right here. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Ray, you get to stay.
Thank you.
And then with this recognition, this started with Carrie Ann Ritchie, our communications
and dispatch supervisor from Tehachapi Police Department. She's the one who made the nomination to the VFW. And Bethless, thank you so much, you know, for what you've done for us as a country and just appreciate you. And this acknowledgement, I think, is outstanding. So thank you.
Hey, John, Ray. Also wanted to invite, we've had representatives from some of our elected officials. We've got from Senator Grove, Kenneth?
Lerner.
Lerner, sorry. You've got a presentation for Ray.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much, Key. I'll just project. No, but yeah, so thank you so much. My name again is Ken Lerner. I'm with State Senator Shannon Grove, and we are just, it's truly an honor just to be here and recognize your achievements, Ray. And thank you again to the VFW for making this award possible. And from the nominations, it's great that we have some of your colleagues over here from the department out with us this evening. But the job of a dispatcher is obviously just very, very crucial for the work that our officers and just also working with the community, you know, when you're out in the line of duty. And we are just so thankful and truly this award is very well deserved. So on behalf of State Senator Shannon Grove, have the certificate of recognition. Congratulations on the floor.
Thank you.
Representing Assemblyman Vince Fong and Congressman Kevin McCarthy is Jessica Jansen.
Yes, so my name's Jessica. I work for Assemblymember Vince Fong, but I also have the honor of providing a certificate of recognition from Congressman McCarthy as well. Just want to echo what my colleague Ken said. We're so grateful to you. We're so grateful for the work you do for our community. It is important. It is vital, and you are so appreciated. Thank you to the VFW for, you know, allowing us to come and be part of this recognition and congratulations. So on behalf of the Assemblymen and the Congressmen, congratulations.
One more. Two. Three. Next, I'd like to invite Laura Lynn Wyatt, representing County Supervisor Zach Scrivner.
Hi, Ray.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor. Where'd he go? Councilman, staff. Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Lynn Wyatt, and I'm the District Director for Kern County Supervisor Zach Scrivner's office. And when Key called me about this, I had to refrain from becoming extremely unprofessional and screaming and yelling and being very giddy because dispatch is very near and dear to me. I was a dispatcher for eight years. I understand the job. I understand it is a difficult job. And many, many times, we're behind the scenes, and we don't get the recognition that is well deserved. They're saving lives every day, just like everyone else that's outside on patrol. And they're the lifeline, in many cases, to the community and the officers. So I got very excited when I got to present this to you, Ray. Congratulations on behalf of Supervisor Zach Scrivner. Thank you.
And from the city of Tehachapi, Mayor Michael Davies.
Thank you.
Would like to also certificate of recognition to Ray Budge for being the dispatcher of the year by the veterans of foreign wars and so proud that she's part of this city. Being a volunteer at the Sheriff's Department, I have firsthand knowledge of communicating to dispatchers. And when you're out there in the field and something goes wrong, they really, they help you. I got invited to go down there and work at the comm center for four hours, and that was an eye-opening experience. We had a young boy called, kept pranking the call, pranking dispatchers, and the dispatcher was very calm and very professional. And after the deputies went to the house to tell mom and dad what I was doing, it was a very eye-opening experience for me, as well as, you know, to learn what you guys really do. So here's, I'd like to give you a certificate of recognition from the city.
Thank you.
Okay. And one more presentation, Rice John. And that's it. We've got so many members of TPD here. I'd like to have all the TPD members up here in front with Ray. I want one more photo with the team, you know, here. You guys are, you can't get up that easy.
While you're assembling, I'd like to say, Mayor and City Council and everyone in the room, one of the best decisions in Tehachapi ever made was to bring back our local control.
You can stand right here. Come on, Ray. Nice to meet you.
Laura Lynn, if you're ever looking for dispatch, John. I would recruit. I'm not kidding.
Get right here. Thank you for your help. Appreciate it. Now, as we move on to the second part, in March, it's National Women's History Month. As a part of that, City of Tehachapi, Cory and I, we had talked about featuring on the podcast, you know, some female-owned businesses. And it was, through that is where we stand here today in our next series of presentations. I'd like to invite Virginia and her husband Bill Sheridan, who own two businesses here in City of Tehachapi. Come on up. I didn't tell you guys, I'd be nervous. I'd like to just tell everyone a little bit about both your businesses.
Oh, okay. Is this later?
Yeah, come on, Ray.
Oh, okay. Don't be shy.
Okay, so some of y'all know me. I'm Virginia Sheridan. Do I need this? I've got a pretty loud voice.
If you're comfortable like that, you can.
Yeah, I don't think I even have it on. And there's my husband, Bill Lee, actually. That's last name's Lee, but anyway, he's gotten used to people calling him Mr. Sheridan. So we opened Sheridan's about 10 years ago downtown Tehachapi. We were one of the first businesses to kind of revitalize storefronts downtown and started out doing antiques mainly and consignment. And we've evolved over the years. It's, we still have antiques, we still have furniture, but a lot of home decor, a lot of gifts, a lot of jewelry, you know. And I see Susan nodding her head because she's a regular customer.
She spends a lot of money in there.
That's good. That's what we like, right? Keep the money going around the community. And then in 2017, you know, we're right there. We started off on the one side of Kelsey's, in what used to be the meeting room, we converted part of that into a small shop. And then in 2017, when the folks that owned the train store retired, we moved over there and we refurbished that space. And when I say we, I mean Bill. So, and we opened that, and then at the same time, Kelsey Owens' daughter, Kathy, decided to retire. And so we decided.
Who's really? Bill. I wanted to keep the downtown. It's Kelsey's downtown, so it keeps the markets from destroying and to keep the environment going. So it's a necessary reason. Now, we did a lot of improvements due to.
Yes, sir.
But yeah, you know, we live downtown, you know, Bill's our neighbor, and just, we love the downtown. So that's just been real important to us, to keep that, the feel of the downtown. We don't want, no offense to Quiznos, but we don't want to see Quiznos come into that location or, you know, have it changed. We wanted to keep both the look of the downtown, you know, which is, we just love it. As I say, it's very comfortable, the whole walkability of it, and the community feel of Kelsey's. So we reopened in 2019. We kept a lot of the old menu, a lot of the, you know, traditional favorites, the biscuits, gravy, all that kind of stuff, and a lot of modern, you know, vegetarian and vegan stuff, a lot of fresh salads. And now we're kind of, you know, we just keep growing, you know? We keep expanding. You know, we want groups to come back and join us, you know? A lot of groups used to meet at Kelsey's. Some groups have come back, but others haven't. So our, we always have projects. Our newest project is, you know, we think, okay, we didn't, I didn't want to put in a TV because it's kind of not what we're looking for, but we figured out a spot where we can put a TV and pull it down. So when groups do come in and use our dining room, they'll have the TV if they need it for the presentations. And the rest of the time, we can just, you know, have it be non-truce. And catering, that's our thing that we're getting more and more into now and hosting events, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I'd like to now have you come forward. We have some presentations, a couple of presentations to share. First, with Jessica Jansen to return, representing both Congressman McCarthy and Assemblyman Fong.
Thank you for having me. So I'm sure some of you noticed, I have my nephew Eli with me here tonight. He's interested in student government, and so I thought I would bring him to a council meeting to see how it ran. And I'm really proud to have brought him to this one so that he can see city leadership honored and recognized, especially, I'm biased, the females in the community who are doing incredible things, keeping downtown alive, keeping that beautiful environment in downtown Tehachapi. We're so grateful for you. I'm so proud to be here, so proud to have him witness this and what the leadership of the whole community is doing. And you are one of the leaders of the community. So thank you so much. Congratulations on this honor. And so on behalf of Congressman McCarthy and Assemblymember Vince Fong, I'd like to present you these certificates.
All right.
And then we'll pose for a photo.
Pat wants one too. Smile at Pat.
And next, I'd like to invite Laura Lynn Wyatt to come forward.
Hi.
How are you?
Good.
Good. Nice to see you.
And I don't think you've met my husband, Joey before.
Hi, Bill. Nice to meet you. I'm Laura Lynn. Once again, everybody, I'm Laura Lynn Wyatt with Kern County Supervisor Zach Scrivner's office. And Virginia is very modest. What she won't share with you is she is truly a leader and pillar of this community. I see her everywhere, and she's always at all the events downtown. She's at the Chamber of Commerce. She's at the Economic Development Council meetings. So she really is hands-on deck, and we really, really appreciate you. So congratulations on behalf of Supervisor Zach Scrivner's office.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You got one more? Sorry.
You hold these two.
And Mayor Michael Davies.
Save the best for last. Congratulations. You know, I always like to use personal experiences, but the roasted chickens and roasted chicken and banana cream pie are the best.
It's the truth. Best chicken in town.
There you go. I have two certificate of recognitions. The first one is for Sheridan's, the boutique home assignment for continued service to City of Tehachapi as a vital part of our downtown and small business community. The City of Tehachapi City Council would like to thank you and your investment and dedication providing your services to our community.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's that one there.
Thank you.
And then this one here is for Kelsey's. We'll do that one for you, right? The City of Tehachapi would like to recognize and congratulate Kelsey's Restaurant Cafe for the continued service to the City of Tehachapi as a vital part of our downtown and small business community. The Tehachapi City Council would like to thank you for your investment, dedication, and continue the legacy of this restaurant in our community. All right. Thank you. I don't know if it was mentioned, but they employ almost 20 people here in our community between their two businesses.
Thank you. Another, you need to get to the left for the.
One more?
And then our next is Vanessa Villanueva. Vanessa made it. I'll just briefly tell you that Vanessa Villanueva, who was a guest on the podcast, this young woman has worked six years in the insurance industry. She's 22 years old.
Wow.
She has her own license, has created her own brokerage, and she has set up a shop in the Village of Chicago, the Village of Chicago by Green and Ave Street. And her business is Shield Pacific Insurance, and she was quite the interesting young lady to talk to. And so if you'd like to hear it, it's on the podcast. But she is another young woman that we want to recognize. And then I'll collect the certificates to distribute to her. And with that, this is something that we just thought, we wanted to highlight businesses, you know, that are committed to the City of Tehachapi and the owners. And we thought we'd start with the women that own the businesses first.
Awesome. Thank you, Key.
Next item, audience oral and written communications. The City Council welcomes public comment on any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Respectfully request that the public forum be utilized in a positive constructive manner. Person addressing the council should first state their name and area of residence, the matter of city business to be discussed, and their organization or persons represented, if any. To ensure accuracy of the minutes, please fill out a speaker's card at the podium. Comments directed to an item on the agenda should be made at the time of the item be called by discussion by the mayor. Questions for non-adjutant items directed to the council staff should be submitted to the city clerk in a written form no later than 12:00 PM on Monday preceding the council meeting. Do we have any public comment from the audience?
We did receive.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Claudia Elliott. I just wondered if you had any reportable action out of your close session.
No reportable action.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Go ahead, Tori. We did have one written.
We did have one email that was received on March 10 of 2023, and I'll read it into the record, "To the City of Tehachapi, this letter is to express outrage over the slow response of the fire department to East D Street in town on the evening of March 8, 2023. The house that burned was the next house from our neighbors. The fire started with what sounded like bombs going off at 8:15 PM. Even though everyone in the neighborhood had called, I called 911 sometime around 9:00 PM. Because the westerly wind was blowing sparks towards our homes, the fire was growing, and I could not believe the fire trucks were still not here. One of the considerations in purchasing our home in Tehachapi in 2003 was that there was a fire hydrant across the street and a fire department right across the field. It was a large consideration in buying a wooden house in this area. As a homeowner and taxpayer, the other night made me realize that I had a generally false sense of security. Although the firemen did a great job when they did get here a few minutes later, I am left with some serious questions. Why was Keane the first to arrive? Why were the trucks unavailable in the city as the 911 dispatchers stated they were coming from Sand Canyon, which is county? How often is the city left vulnerable while the county is receiving services? While all the fire trucks and policemen were here for a few hours, did someone else in our city go without services? I'm deeply, I'm deeply grateful for our police and firemen. However, I no longer feel safe, and it seems that some kind of reorganization of services is definitely in order. Sincerely, Sue Page, Tehachapi, California, 935610."
Do we have any comments from the audience? Do we have a comment from the city council?
Yes. I go back a long ways, I guess I should say. My dad was a volunteer fire chief at the Mojave Station 14. I've been a journalist forever, so I've been involved in a lot of EMS situations. One day, when the ambulance and the helicopter were fighting over who was going to carry the patient, and the helicopter actually came down and tried to stop the ambulance. I mean, we've come a long ways in Kern County with our EMS, but this is unacceptable. I understand about mutual aid. I understand about backing up other stations. I don't understand why Keane wasn't called the minute they found out someone else was in Sand Canyon. I also do not understand, when we're paying, how much are we paying, sir?
It's progressively increasing, but it's a little over a million now, upwards of two and a half, 2.3 in four years.
Thank you. We're paying for full-service firemen. I understand you have to go back up other people. I don't understand why you spend a lot of time in Rosemont when you have Mojave as Station 14. And does it now have four or three firemen there? I think it's a bigger station than we have here. It's ridiculous. And I know you can give me 40 bureaucratic reasons as to why this occurred, but none of them are acceptable, especially a wooden house in windy Tehachapi. And luckily, there wasn't anybody trapped in a back bedroom or anything because we would be holding funeral services now. We wouldn't be saying, "Thank God, we got you out." And, you know, it's a wonder that a lot of other things didn't go up. We had a group of houses in Mojave years ago that the railroad built that were like shacks. And we always said, "One night, one of those is going to catch on fire, and the train will be there, and the fire department won't be able to get there." Well, guess what? It did. Six houses burned, train, fire couldn't get there, you know, big mess. And I only use that as an example because we live in a windy area, and not being able to depend, you know, we pay our property tax and our insurance based on how close we are to a fire hydrant and how close we are to a fire station. So theoretically, I have a really good rate, but I'm not sure that's going to help me in the future. So I find this unacceptable, and I really want to have some answers.
Bill?
I'd have to echo that. I don't know if they're allowed to come up and address the council at this point with this item?
They, you mean Kern County Fire?
Yes.
If they would like.
If you kind of give us some insight, I'm a very typically calm council member. This sets you off, and it sets off our citizens and our residents, as you can imagine here. You're on the hot seat right now. Coming up, there is no, there's no excuse for the response time. Do you have the exact numbers of when the first responder showed up from Keane?
Yeah, the answer to that is 17 minutes until the first resource from Keane arrived at the fire scene.
Right. Typical responses in the city are three to five minutes. That's typical. But you can imagine on a structure fire or something like this, 17 minutes, it's a total loss. loss in that amount of time. Was Keen on its way when the other units were on their way to Sand Canyon?
So there's been a lot of questions so far.
Yeah, that's why I'm going to let you off. Give you an opportunity.
So my name is Andrew Kesson, and I represent the department to the city. And so that's exactly why I'm here, to answer these questions for you guys. So with me tonight, I brought battalion chief Jason Schillinger, who was on duty that evening. And so a lot of particulars about the times and what the decisions were made that evening, if you want to ask those, I can bring Jason up, but.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but I just wanted to say to lead it off, you know, we, along with the Greater California Fire Service, embrace closest forces concept and master mutual aid. So it was true, as it said in the email, our resources were on Sand Canyon on a structure fire response. And the timing of the two incidents hit in such a way that we were committed elsewhere. We also employed California City's fire agent up there as an example of the mutual aid agreements that are in place. You know, unfortunately, this is the struggle with emergency management in general, limited resources. There are just times where delayed response happens because of incident activity, including catastrophic times such as the Rich Press earthquakes or the floods.
Sure.
That we're experiencing now. I'm not trying to make excuses, I'm just trying to paint the picture. We do care about Toatchby, we care about this community. Many of us live up here, in fact, all three of us live in the general area. So.
But we're here to, we are bearing the brunt of the residents, our constituents, saying, how in the H did this happen? How could it be that the fire department is so close and then took so long to respond?
Right, yeah. And so just add one more thing on that, you know, we have the contract, as the city manager mentioned, with the city. And in the contract, it does stipulate how we manage staffing. There's no hard threshold for when we are mandated by contract to provide and cover. But in general, the local battalion chief will make a determination based on how he feels. The resources within the battalion, he's got a limited amount of resources, and when it's appropriate to shift resources. So we don't, when we receive a call, especially in the case of the other night, we didn't know exactly what was happening in Sand Canyon yet. In fact, Chief Schillinger staged resources. He didn't send everybody all the way into Sand Canyon, because that would have been inappropriate, because he leaves some people behind in case there is another call. So we do the best we can with that, but it's not always clean cut. We don't start a cover engine immediately every time.
Clarification then, was it a structure fire or a vehicle fire in Sand Canyon?
Jason, why don't you just answer some of the specific questions, and I'm right here.
All right. Good evening. Pretty good, understand, we need answers.
I'm here to answer some questions for you. Again, I'm Jason Schillinger, battalion chief of B-Shift up here.
Yes.
Station over here.
Yeah.
Lived here my whole life, so obviously it's important to me.
Good.
Growing up here, starting here in Connecticut.
Yes.
So go ahead and repeat the question.
The question was, what was the incident in Sand Canyon? I've got other varying comments, that it was a vehicle fire versus a structure fire.
So the call came in as a trash truck on fire. And then while en route with three pieces of equipment, which is Engine 12, Engine 13, and then 14, so you have Mojave, Golden Hills, and Toatchby, they're all en route to the call. While en route, getting just a few miles down the road, they said that there's a tent involved, so now it's some type of structure. So we have a vehicle, a large vehicle, and some type of tent makeshift structure that are on fire. So we continued the response, get back in there. Of course, with all the rain and snow, getting into there is tough. And so I staged Engine 12, which is the Toatchby engine right down here, and I also staged Engine 14, Mojave. So I took the Golden Hills engine as far as I could, and then took a captain from Engine 13 in my vehicle, because we could see the fire up on the hill, but we didn't know how to get to it because of the snow and then also the mud. It wasn't frozen at the time, so we couldn't get through where we needed to get through. So we tried to get there, remember, all these equipment is down on the pavement now, not up in the mud, stuck. At that point, dispatch calls me and says, battalion one, we have a reinforced structure to Toatchby, or an station 12 there. I said, copy, take Engine 14 and Engine 12, and then they added other engines to that response. So we have five pieces of equipment. So on a normal structure fire here, we'll get Keen, Bear Valley, Stallion, Golden Hills and Toatchby, along with a safety officer, another battalion chief from Bakersfield, and then myself. So those are the resources that we normally have. So all that stuff kind of got put together, since I had Engine 13 with me, Engine 19, which is Cal City started. And so that's a mutual aid agreement that we've had with them. They come up here, we go down there, and I say "we," I mean the Kern County Fire Department, not Engine 12. But there are times where Engine 12 can't find themselves out there, or like somebody mentioned Roseman, that happens. When I know that equipment's going to be extended and not back in their area in a timely manner, we do get a coverage. It could be from Stallion Springs, Bear Valley, or Keen. But knowing that Toatchby City is very important to me, obviously, I've lived here my whole life, I get a coverage started as soon as possible. We weren't even on scene yet, so I don't even know what we have to start a coverage for Keen to come up here and respond. Does that kind of answer the question on?
Yes, I guess we want to know in the future, not knowing what the coverage is, but you're going to leave the town bare, not knowing what you're expecting out there, I would think you would start the coverage immediately when you're vacating the station. So as the station's vacated, someone should be on their way.
From another area.
Because you don't know what you're going to be up against, how long it's going to take to get there, all these scenarios that you addressed. I guess in my mind, and just saying, your call is, you wait to see what's going to happen before you have someone start. So there is no set rule that as soon as you vacate the city limits, you start another engine?
There's nothing in contract that shows when we start a coverage or not start a coverage.
We might want to add that to a contract, that is stipulated. So otherwise, we're going to be bare, because county resources, like was stated, are very bare. I mean, they're stated that you don't have enough resources, so the citizens of Toatchby are paying, you know, your family, all the members of our department's families are counting on Station 12 to have someone here all the time. And if they're going to leave for any amount of time, someone should be rolling, this backup should be rolling immediately. I mean, not just a, but this should be a contractual item, not just a, it takes the load off of you to make the call. It should just be, if this is the situation, this is what we do. So we're bending.
I'm here, and trust me.
Yes.
I totally understand the question, the comments you guys have.
Yeah.
And I'm stating, you know, obviously the facts of what happened that night.
Sure.
When that call came in, and my dispatcher calls me, to the furthest point I could be to try to get through, the fire's burning up on the hill.
Yeah.
I have a fire, a confirmed fire, and I've never left a fire in my career, ever, to drive one. I drove away from a fire to come to Toatchby City. That is, I've never done that. I told my division chief, I said, I drove away from a fire. Getting there, not getting there, there was an issue of possibly, we need some law enforcement. And so their car got stolen, there was a lot of other things with that call that raised hair on my neck going, I don't feel comfortable going in there, I'm not taking my guys in there, I'm leaving, going to Toatchby City. And I did, and I came back to protect the city.
Yeah. So we'll be having discussions at higher levels with this contract situation, whereas my, if it's my family in my neighborhood, it should be your family, your neighborhood. You would want, as soon as Station 12 departs to Roseman during the day, or wherever they're going, or a fire in Sand Canyon, that immediately backup is rolling to Toatchby, not, we're going to see what we got, and then we'll call.
On a reinforced, go ahead.
And that eliminates that lag time, it could be 10 minutes difference or more, but at least they're rolling the engine to backup Toatchby.
On a reinforced structure, there's an obvious explanation. So a structured response, you're getting three pieces of equipment, three engines. On a reinforced structure, you're getting five.
Okay.
On a reinforced structure, a coverage is started, I'm starting, and there's other battalion chiefs that work, but I'm saying myself, I am starting a coverage. It could be from Bear Valley, Stallion, or Keen, depending on where that call is.
Yeah.
On that reinforced, I'm probably going to be getting, the way the dispatch goes, Cal City and then also Keen. So it would be at Bear Valley or Stallion Springs in there.
Yeah.
And normally, I would bring Stallion Springs to cover the city, which I do multiple times, I've done multiple times throughout my career.
Sure.
It's the way the call came out of a structure fire, not knowing what we have, and we still have engines around, and then the call came in, obviously, the worst time I possibly could. You know, knowing I can't get to it, I was already getting ready to release equipment, because if I can't get to it, an engine, because I'm not going to get an engine stuck, and I have to call my dozer guys to come, you know, pull it out. So it happened at the worst time it could happen, and it did.
Okay. Thank you for your explanation. You know it's not you that were.
No, it's just me. I represent the fire chief, you know, and I'm here to, I want to answer questions, and you guys, obviously, the council and the mayor, you guys know how important this, this call, it's been awkward to me, because driving away from a fire, coming to the city, and now having a late response, and having other pieces of equipment, you know, show up 17 minutes later.
Yeah.
That is not the norm, it's never happened in my 19-year career.
I also would like to add that one of the reasons that we have a contract with you is because of mutual aid. I can't tell you how many citizens have said, you can't have your own fire department, you have to use the county because of that big mutual aid they'll provide. They'll back up no matter what. And I guess our understanding of mutual aid was a little different. And it makes me wonder if maybe we need to go back, take a few steps back and look at this whole idea, do we want the county, do we want our own, what do we want if mutual aid isn't what we think it is?
If you can, let's just say you had your own fire department, and I don't want to get too deep in any of it.
Yeah.
Okay, but if there's, I want to call all of you guys on that.
So in this particular case, the mutual aid that the city did ultimately receive, albeit late, was the additional four engines, and those four engines come at no additional cost to the city. Additionally, the city in the contract, to answer a previous question about how often this happens, realizes a 17.66% discount, which accounts for actual metrics of how often Engine 12 leaves the city limits and runs calls based on actual call data. And so that is how the contract was designed. Certainly, everything can be renegotiated and revisited. But the methodology was accounted for, for the fact that Engine 12, as paid for by the city, leaves periodically, and we acknowledge that we do, we follow best management practices to bring in a backup as soon as possible.
So would Station 12's dispatch to Roseman?
Yeah.
Which is frequent, it sounds like?
Right.
Is it an immediate backup, rolling?
It's a great question. So the majority of times when Station 12 responds to Roseman, it's either for a traffic collision or a rescue response, so it's two or three pieces, and so you have built-in coverage to your city that comes at no additional cost, which sits half a mile outside city limits, which is Station 13.
Do they roll right away?
No, the way the call's kind of set up with the way the city, or where Roseman is at, typically what happens is 12 will leave, and 13 is not on the response. And so the majority of times when 12 is vacated, and we provide data reports to the city manager on call stats.
Yeah.
13 is still in service at the station, so the call, the backup protection is already built in. Larger calls, such as reinforced structure fires, like Chief Schillinger said, which require five, that's when all of the pieces get engaged, and then we need to start bringing in resources from Metro Bakersfield or the desert and plug them in up here so we have backup coverage in place.
All right.
It's hard to, it's worth a longer conversation, for sure.
Yes.
But it is hard to draw a hard line on measure to bring in hard coverage. It can be done, but it would require a lot of additional costs.
Because we just went to the taxpayers for a one cent sales tax for our public service of the fire and our public safety, fire and police, and we're going to, questions, are we going to have the same coverage, or we want it as good or better if we're asking them for additional funding?
Right.
And a lot of it, and our funding's going to have to be increased substantially over the next few years to plug in for the same service that we're now getting from Kern County Fire. So, okay.
Have a comment. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your service. Okay, we appreciate you. At this point, I don't appreciate the county and the program that's set before us. We pay you a nominal fee for protection, and it's not, I don't think it's right, that if we have to send our unit to some other place that immediately, to get the coverage that we're buying, that next unit should be rolling. That is not acceptable. I mean, we kind of sit here and hear a plan that's, well, if this, if that, if, let's have a plan where we know what we're doing. I don't think it's fair to you guys, why are we sending five units out into, you know, halfway to nowhere, and there's nothing, what's going on, when we have no coverage in Toatchby? We have no coverage in Golden Hills. That's not fair. I live in a mobile home park. Fifteen or seventeen minutes in that park with a fire, 13 or 12 units gone. And we've seen this in LA, when they had the earthquake down there. Watched some of the TV, one after another, gone. And that's not what we're paying for. And whoever you need to go to and talk to, you need to talk to them, because we're going to be talking.
I have one final question. Did you have a question, George?
Well, I just have a concern. My husband was a deputy sheriff for Kern County for 27 years, and his first assignment included a 500-mile radius from Walker Basin to Boron to Roseman to Toatchby. And if he had a call in Boron, it took him too long to get, the response time was horrible, of course, and there was no backup. And unfortunately, I'm saddened, because I think there are less young men and women going into law enforcement, and I don't know how the fire department fares, but I'm afraid that we'll have a shortage, you know, of deputy sheriff, police, firemen in the near future, and that's a big concern for me. So, and I do appreciate everything you do, I know how hard it is sometimes.
All right, one final thought. And I will echo that. We sure appreciate you guys, and we recognize what you guys do on multiple occasions. Just curious, why Mojave doesn't roll to incidents in Roseman, since they're so much closer?
No, that's a good question.
Sure.
They do. Yeah, they're the second, and oftentimes we'll request an engine from Edwards Air Force Base to go into Roseman, we use them quite a bit. And Los Angeles County sends an engine from Lancaster.
Right.
As part of a mutual aid agreement. So for calls down on the county line, they can be, you know, mixed bag of who's actually there fighting the fire or against it. And we do appreciate this, like I want to echo Chief Schillinger, thank you for, you know, we appreciate the situation here, and you have constituents to answer to, and you want answers.
Yes.
For what's going on. And, yeah, you know, I guess just to add one final thing, you know, it's a difficult situation across the board, because even Will and Anthony live as far as California City, they have their own fire department, and they pay full tilt for it. And they were up here in Sand Canyon fighting fire with us, and their city was uncovered. So they do that because of mutual aid. They do that because we'll send resources to them, because you can't run a fire department with one fire, not effectively.
Yeah.
Not when you have people trapped in a rescue situation. That's why we sent five.
Yeah.
Because that's science-based response metrics. We know how many people it takes to affect a rescue, we know how often firefighters get trapped and need rescue themselves, it's all factored in. So, but we are here for you to answer these questions. I know, we don't want to take a politics, I'll take it for what we want.
It's important.
We will get you the answers you guys need and.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
My comment is, I appreciate you both being here and taking the heat of it for the department. But, you know, you have to understand, you know, I didn't want to leave the house after this, because I was accosted at Save Mart, you know, and hey, if it would have been my house burning, I would have been, I would have been on somebody else, so it's on me now. So just very upset, you know, we did the 1%, we did all the, what we could do to get our sales tax, and so we can help pay your guys' and pay our first responders.
Yeah.
And this has really hurt. I mean, this is something that's in our community.
our community, and we're always proud of you guys, everything that you do. Still proud of you, just very disappointed what happened. I know, being in law enforcement myself as a volunteer, you know, when there's that one deputy in town and he has to go to Mojave, there's nobody here, so then Bear Valley comes to cover, I understand. But I think we need to get some planned action, Sir Jason, that it's got to be something that happens. So, you know, we should have had Stallion responding in town, just hanging out in town until they can get back and see what's going on. Whoa, you know, just get them closer. I mean, I know this doesn't happen in your career, you know, it hasn't happened, but it happened. So now we have something to go back on. Let's don't, let's make sure it doesn't happen again. Like to have answers for something. We got to, we got to come up with a plan to make sure that our residents are safe. You guys are residents, we, but we got to have a plan. We can't let this happen again. We have to answer to our constituents, and we've got to come up with a plan. I appreciate you guys being here tonight and taking the brunt of it, but I do appreciate you.
Yeah, I assure you, we'll work, I'll work with Greg and make sure we don't drop the ball. We're going to have additional conversations.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Great.
So, you know, I want to say thank you to Kern County Fire for what you do. Andrew, is this on?
Yeah.
Andrew and I have actually created a pretty strong relationship over the last year or so. The city is receiving data that it's never received before. You know, cities exist for local control. Local control. I made a comment earlier about our police department and our dispatch. One of the best things we ever did. Right now, with Kern County Fire, enjoy that local control. We have a situation that just, just transpired. The county of Kern hired a consultant a number of years ago and worked on a, a, let's say, a project because nine cities in Kern County have contracts with Kern County Fire. There are 11 cities. California City and Bakersfield have their own. The other nine cities have contracts with Kern County Fire. They worked on this contract, or this project, with a consultant for two years without informing any of the cities. And then they revealed it to the cities and said, "We're going to raise your rates by 6,000% maybe over the next five years." Phil Smith, you were with me. We had several meetings with Kern County, Kern County Fire leadership.
After they announced that.
After they announced it. And the cities were baffled, dumbfounded, and trying to figure out what's going on here. We were told to take it or leave it with the contract. Take it or leave it, period. If you don't like it, start your own. Our backs were against the wall. Of course, we signed the contract that we're talking about tonight. When a house burns and it takes, my data shows 20 minutes, actually not 17 minutes, but we can talk about that. I get data every 24, every morning for the previous 24 hours. The only data I have, I receive is when Station 12 and 13 are dispatched. I don't receive information as to when they might return. We're working on that. We've got a lot of work to do. It's amazing to me how often Station 12 and 13, daily, quite frankly, are in Roseman. And when we talk about local control, we're paying $2.2 million for fire protection, and it's in Roseman. That's a conversation to have.
Yep.
Certainly. And that's what we're talking about here. So what I'd like to propose is that city staff work with Kern County Fire, and we bring back to you what's really going on here. Because I think this is a perfect opportunity to peel back the layers of the onion and understand fire protection for the city of Tatchby. The county of Kern, the residents in Golden Hills, Roseman, Mojave, they don't pay extra for fire protection. It's just in their property taxes. The city of Tatchby pays extra for fire protection.
I work county residents as well.
I work county residents as well.
Yeah.
Lots of different flaws that I could find, but the commitment is that we work together to figure this out, just like we're committed to figuring out this derailment issue. This is a big problem for our community, for our nation, quite frankly. But when the railroads don't contact Kern County Fire, when there's a derailment, just a heads up, that's a problem. When Kern County doesn't mandate that they call, Kern County Fire should reach out to them and say, "You're going to contact me? What the hell's going on? We need to know." That's a problem. So we have a lot of work to do. Not just house fires, but protection overall in our city, in our community. When this fire happened, there was no coverage in the Tatchby Valley at all. Station 12 and 13 were both called.
Sounds like one solution would be a station in Roseman, and then when they're idle, they can help out here.
Sounds good.
Anyway, thanks, guys.
Thank you much.
Thanks both of you.
All right. Item six, RSI disbursements and bills for March 1st through March 14th. These authorized payments. I need to recuse myself. Mayor Proton Pokencor, because I'm an employee of RSI Petroleum.
Do we have any public comment on that at this point? Then, counsel?
No. Motion to approve. Second, roll call.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sakowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pokencor?
Yes.
It's a 4-0 vote with a recusal from Mayor Davies.
All right. Finance Director reports. Hamed?
Thank you, Mayor Davies, councilmembers. Staff has completed its mid-year budget adjustments for fiscal year 2223. And before you, we have a summary of the fund balance and the changes in revenue and expenditures for all of the city's funds. So I'd just like to highlight that citywide overall, out of the fund balance of $35 million, the mid-year budget adjustments resulted in an overall net decrease of just $56,000. We'll start with the general fund. There is a fund balance increase of just under $2 million. On the expenditure side, there were some reductions, and that is mainly due to vacancies in the police department. On the revenue side, most revenues are up, but a big part of that number is in the additional sales tax that will be effective April 1st. You won't be receiving those funds until probably August or September. So these are just estimates, projections of what we'll have to do in accounting accrual for this fiscal year. Moving on to the gas tax, streets and roads, and the capital project and special revenue funds, you see decreases in fund balance that are $436,000 as well as $80,000. Those are just timing related to capital projects and when they're estimated to be completed in this fiscal year. Jumping to water, you'll see a decrease of $1,460,000. That's primarily due to two mainline replacements done this fiscal year. Cherry Lane mainline replacement was originally budgeted last fiscal year, but was moved or carried forward into the current fiscal year. And then you also had the Dennison mainline replacement that was originally budgeted in next fiscal year, but was moved up to the current fiscal year. I'll point out there on the airport fund, you have just under $6 million decreases both to revenue and expenditures, and that is from the taxiway relocation project. We originally budgeted that in the current fiscal year, but we are moving that into the next fiscal year. And so both the expenditures are moving as well as the grant-related revenue. There are further categories, you know, variances explained in the following pages. I won't go into detail on those, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have. And I recommend that the council approve the 2022-23 mid-year budget adjustments as presented.
Do we have any public comment from the audience? Counsel? Mayor Smith, term of service, councilmember Smith?
Thank you for the review. And just let the public know that we are, I'll let you state it, that we are in good health financially. Would you state that?
Yes. Yes, the city's in great health financially and a strong general fund reserve and fund balance.
Thank you.
Keith?
Just thank you for your hard work. Appreciate it. Go Bruins.
Thank you for presenting things that we understand, too.
Great job. It's always well done. It's a beautiful document. Very well done, and we appreciate that. Previously with Hannah as well. She always did a great job as well. Well, city. Thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve. Second, roll call, both please.
Councilmember Sakowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pokencor?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Motion, hearings.
Development Services Director reports. Mr. Jay?
Honorable mayor and councilmembers, I have one item for you tonight. It is to enter into an agreement with Lisa Wise Consulting, Incorporated, to generate the 2023 housing element. So by way of background, let me begin this way. The city's general plan, which is our primary roadmap for the, for the way the city's going to grow and mature in the next 20, 30, 40 years, that document has many different elements to it. And it has different components that make up that plan. You know, maybe one of the, it's got a town visioning document that talks about the way we want buildings to look and how we want our, our areas of town to develop. It has a mobility element that talks about how we're going to build out the roads and bicycle paths to achieve those goals. It also has what's known as a housing element. And most of the elements of the general plan, this one, housing element is unique because by state law, it must be updated on a regular basis. And it integrates with state policy related to housing needs assessment. So the simplest way to put it is that the state mandates that the county-level areas plan for the growth of the state of California. And then they establish growth patterns on a county-by-county basis that then distributes the type of that growth based on income. So they're looking at the census, and they're saying, "Okay, Kern County is going to have this many citizens in the next 20 years, and they're going to have this distribution of wealth." And, and from there, the county then works with all the individual agencies through the Kern Council of Governments to generate that regional housing needs assessment, or it's called RENA, is the acronym that's utilized. And so the RENA talks about how we're going to distribute those different population base based on area. Kern Co does a lot of modeling work that helps us figure out where those are going. And the RENA was recently updated. And as you guys know, the governor has not been shy about talking about his desired goals for housing in the state of California. They're aggressive, to say the least. They're sort of obscenely aggressive. They're, they're very difficult to achieve. And, and so that filter down through this last regional housing needs assessment process. Fortunately, for the city of Tatchby, the city of Bakersfield recognized and almost put their hand up and said, "Okay, the vast majority of that housing is going to land in the metro Bakersfield area," when they generated the RENA. So the city's projections for needed housing really haven't changed that much from the previous cycle to this new cycle. But nonetheless, the housing element has a lifespan to it. And we are required to update the housing element to reflect the latest and greatest RENA documents. The last time we did this was eight years ago, and we took advantage of a special state law that allowed us to do that housing element and receive an eight-year grace period following the production of that document. I think, Phil, you might have been the only one here that, and maybe Susan, I think you might have voted on that item as well. So that eight years is up. 2023 is the year. It is time for us to update the housing element. Again, unlike the other components of the general plan, we, there are consequences to not updating your housing element. The state is headhunting local agencies that are not willing to adopt their component of the RENA and figure out how to plan for those. Huntington Beach is the famous example that if you read the news, that they're locked in legal battle with the attorney general over stuff like this. So we'd like to avoid that. We think it's easy for us to actually avoid that. Fundamentally, let me maybe just as a preview for the final document, the way the housing element works is you have to look at how much housing you need, and you simply have to confirm that you've zoned enough land to achieve that goal. You don't actually have to achieve the housing. You just have to make it so that it's not impossible to achieve that housing. And, and you allow the market to determine what houses actually get constructed or not. And so thankfully, the city of Tatchby, as we all know, has some room to grow in that regard. So it should not be hard for us to, to meet the needs. And again, the latest agreement is not much different from the one prior in terms of the distribution of housing. The, the one thing that has changed is the complexity of the housing element has grown enormously in the last eight years. Again, as the state is, is trying to achieve their goals for changing our, the state of California to the society they want, they, they have instituted a lot of, a lot of additional elements to the, to what makes up the housing element. So that is what is reflected in the contract that's before you tonight. Lisa Wise Consulting prepared, helped prepare our general plan. They did prepare our entire zoning code in 2014. They prepared our last housing element in 2015, and our sign code more recently. They're an expert firm. We've utilized them frequently, and, and so we'd like to utilize them again tonight. So that is the project description. We would get started and generate the 2023 housing element in accordance with all of the state's current regulations for the production of that document. The budget for that work is $178,035, which includes a 10% contingency. I've provided some fiscal information in there about where we might fund this effort from, and I can talk about that in more detail if you want. There are a number of public hearings that you will see once we initiate this work. The, the final thing that I'd like to point out is, is that the city has a purchasing policy that typically requires us to obtain at least three quotes for services of this nature. And in this case, staff is requesting that you waive that requirement and that we hire Lisa Wise because of their extensive experience and their proven track record for generating documents that get approved by HCD and keep us from any kind of, you know, folk, unwanted focus from the state of California. So I therefore recommend that you approve the agreement between the city of Tatchby and Lisa Wise Consulting, Incorporated, for the 2023 housing element update. Be happy to answer questions.
Do we have any public comment? Comment from council?
If the city of Bakersfield is going to be taking on the responsibility of a number of homes in that, should that not bring that cost down? I find 178, 178, 30 as quite a cost for this. And maybe I'm stepping on toes, I'm sorry. But generally, don't you, if you're going to buy something or do something, don't you generally get three bids? And are we in a crunch here that we need to go ahead and do this?
Yeah. So a couple of different questions there. Let me, and then if you've got more, I'm happy to answer them. The first one is, is that it's a process, not, there is no connection between the number of houses you have to kind of consider in your element and the value, the cost of the document. The production of the document is a process, and that's what's changed. That's why the price is, the price was startling to me as well. I mean, I think the last time we did this, we paid about $50,000 to $70,000 to do this same document. The reason is, and if you go to, I don't know, page 56 of the PDF, Tori, so LWC provided a very detailed scope of services. Because they sat with me and they said, "Jay, we don't think you're going to be prepared for this." When I had those initial conversations.
I wouldn't be either.
Yeah. And so the technical components, for instance, these are new requirements from Housing and Urban Development Department in the state of California. So you have to do, you have to do an extensive needs assessment. You have to do a sites inventory. You literally have to GIS every vacant property in the city and determine its viability for, for uses. And so you can see, their team's taken a lot of time to help us understand, because I anticipated this concern, the types of things that the state now requires that they introduce. And so they told me, "Jay, we'll spend months categorizing all this data about your town in order to prepare the analysis." There has to be a constraints analysis, which isn't as simple as just saying, "Hey, there aren't, there aren't constraints. You can build houses." They, in the, in the goals of achieving equity at the state level, there now has to be extensive analysis associated with what those constraints look like to people having housing, or constraints that home builders might have if they wanted to build low-income housing, or even market rate housing. You're, they're required to do an analysis. Okay, what, what keeps them from doing it? What are their obstacles? What are their hurdles? And the whole point of doing this is to, is, is for you to convince the state that you're doing it right, that you're not placing undue burdens. And again, think of Huntington Beach, who's, who's caught in a series of lawsuits with the state because they are putting hurdles in the way of housing they don't want. the state because they are putting hurdles in the way of housing they don't want. You know, so, right, wrong, or indifferent, that's what's prompted the state to do a lot of this stuff. There's public outreach, there's review of our existing programs, there's an assessment of furthering fair housing, that's AB 686, that's a new law. So, I know, I can see the look on your face, Councilmember Sakowitz, I know none of this is welcome news, you know, but it is all mandated by the state of California, which is why it's included in this scope of work.
I, I guess I don't have a problem with the state, I'm just looking at something that's almost 200% more than the average, and that, that rings a bell.
Yeah, it's, this is less than the average for the state now, this is only 200% of what the last one cost, but everybody's paying for this now. So everybody that's updating their housing element now is doing all of this stuff. So, this is a perfect example of an unfunded mandate from the state of California, they pass a law, they say you now need to analyze the following six things when you generate your next planning document, and there's no money for you to do that, you just gotta figure out how to make your taxpayers pay for it, so.
I just wanted to ask a question.
Yeah, no, it's fair, it's a fair question. It's a huge lift now for our department, I think this is gonna take somewhere between eight and nine months, there's a schedule included, I should actually quote that instead of making up a number.
I know, just, just looking, and we're, we're looking at $88,035 more than we've got in fine.
So that's the one good news that I do have for you, is, is budgetary wise, we have about, the, the city instituted in our new fee program for the development department about four or five years ago, a long-range planning surcharge fee. In every building permit and every new planning permit, charges an additional 7.5% surcharge to each one of those permits, for the specific purpose of gathering money to do long-range planning activities like this. We only managed to get about $90,000 into that account as of right now, and proposing to spend that money on this, and then to take a loan from the general fund, then as we collect those fees, we'll pay back. So at least, on the bright side there, the, the funds for this effort are coming from the building that's occurring in town. So that's why you assign it to a building permit or a planning permit, you're making the new development in town pay for all these planning documents that guide all that development. So that's the association, so. Yes, sir.
Phil?
Thank you for all of this. This is a lot to digest, and it's a lot, it's gonna be a lot of work, it's not gonna be just a, a document that they plug in our name. No, not at all, the other thing that they made, they warned me, is that HCD's typically running three reviews before approval, that's the state agency that oversees these, so that's how, they're diving deep when they do these, which is, again, my argument for you, Lisa Wise, is I want a document that, for all of our sake, moves this behind, that we do the right thing and that we move on.
And that we pass it to the person.
Yeah, yeah, well, as soon as, so they make that, if you go to page 63, oh, there, yeah, Tori's got it up, that's the schedule, you'll see that we're largely attempting to get the document roughed out by June, July. We, we have a number of, we have a public review meeting required that we're tentatively scheduling for summertime, and then from there, we're going through the iterative process of getting the state to approve the document.
Okay. I just have one question before I call for a motion. Do we need to make, state that, we've only taken this one bid? Do we need to state for the rest?
No, you can make that part of your motion to waive the, the requirement for three bids, I'm surprised there's a requirement, this is a service contract, we don't normally require bids for service contracts.
It's, it's a policy document, not, yeah, so it's, in the city, it's a policy, it's not a requirement under our, our rules and regulations, I just thought, and it is written in the staff report, I think, Tom, so if they approved the recommendation I gave, I would argue that the staff report explained that our policy says this and that I didn't obtain these.
He's asked for, for a waiver, I don't think that's necessary, but put that into your motion, so waive for the three, the three bids, for three contacts.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agreement between Lisa Wise Consulting and the city of Tehachapi for the 2023 housing element update, and authorize the city, the mayor to sign, and with the stipulation that we're only...
Waiving the three...
Waiving the three...
Contacts.
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 All right.
So move. Second.
Roll call, vote please.
Councilmember Sakowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Pokencourt?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Motion carried with a waiver for the three contracts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. City manager reports?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. If there's nothing else, we'll adjourn.
Sorry, sir.
City man, uh, city council.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't think, I don't have any.
Phil, do you have anything?
It's been a long meeting. At our KernCOG meeting, Kern Council of Governments meeting, we had a very special guest at our meeting, the chairman of the California Transportation, Transportation Commission, and the, probably an hour's worth of discussion was on truck climbing lengths and how we could proceed, how we're very discouraged that we didn't get the grant funding from the bi, I think it was a bilateral, bipartisan grant that was Congress passed, we, we did not get that, 'cause it's so highly competitive, and this project, these three phases are so, they're no one's project, it's a state project, it doesn't belong to the city of Tehachapi, doesn't belong to Bakersfield, Little County, but it's a regional, it's a, it's a highway of regional significance, and we're trying to elevate that to as high a level as we can with everybody that'll listen, so we're gonna, I mean, we talked about that almost the whole meeting. We had a dinner for, a little luncheon before it was dinnertime, but we all sat around and talked and then engaged with her on that subject, along with a few other things on transportation, but she got the message, and she's born and raised in the Central Valley, Fresno and that area, and very tuned in to our needs for those projects, and I think we're getting closer for maybe the, the phase two is the Calianni climb, that that second phase, but, which is about $44 million, so if we can get, it's gonna come down to the state saying, District 9, we need what they call shop funds, which is a special pot of money, versus us always having to go out and compete for grants, and we've never competed, we don't have enough boxes to check off, where someone in a metro area, oh, they need their sixth lane for passing because they got 100,000 people passing there a day, we're always competing around the state with projects that always have a higher count or a higher score than, than a rural highway, it should have been an interstate, 'cause from Highway 40, I reiterated to them, from Highway 40 to the I-5, you've got Highway 58, it's got at-grade crossings, you know, we've got, you know, where there should be overpasses, just the congestion, and then Zach, he chimed in, he said, when he's coming up, he has seen, Zach Skriebner, our county supervisor, he sits on the board as well, he said he's seen people with big gulps throwing at drivers that have pulled out in front of them, you know, just, everyone's been through it, on Highway 58, on those three sections that are just getting worse and worse and worse. Then we pointed out how with the addition of these centralized distribution centers, they're just adding more trucks every time, you know, you get an Amazon come online, or all these other ones, you've got Target, IKEA, all over, Chapter, and all roads are heading out of the state and coming in, through Tehachapi, through that Highway 58. So we really pressed the issue, pressed at home, so that's my report from Kern Council of Governments the other night.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Do what we can.
I just have one thing to say, I know it hasn't been said, and I know he's kind of shy, but I'd like to congratulate Corey Castello for participating in the LA Marathon again. Here, I complained that I had to do five basketball games and I ran 5, 5.1 miles, so, good job, sir. I understand we had six people from Tehachapi up there, but...
Seven in the full, yeah.
Yeah, but the Tehachapi Warrior hat, that was a great addition. Thanks, Corey.
Thank you.
Good luck. If there's nothing else, meeting's adjourned.